Four according. Okay, six thirty-four. If we could all stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Republicans. One nation, under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending. Okay, first order of business is public comment. Would anyone like to make public comment? Hearing none, we will move on. The next item for approval is the April second regular meeting minutes, and I do have a correction which was brought to my attention. Under item eighteen at the end, the very last item where we I had asked for a motion to go into executive session, I would just like to amend that to add the wording that says regarding item eleven, we didn't identify what we were going into executive session for at that point. We did at the beginning at item eleven, we said we were going to push it to the end and go into executive session, but when we got there, we didn't identify it. So if I can just have a motion to amend and approve the minutes as I noted.
I'll move to approve the amendment, which is going to be my only question.
Okay, okay, can I get a second? Okay, any other corrections anyone found or noted? Hearing none, all in favor? unanimous, okay, and then we have the approval of the April twenty-second special meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve?
Okay.
Second, okay, any comments, questions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, okay, perfect, those are approved. We have one tax refund. I didn't make copies, I figured I'd save a tree. It is for back to Toyota lease trust. And it's the reason is said sold leased vehicle. So what happened is the people that were leasing the vehicle bought the vehicle. So the lease was done. So this refund is going back to Toyota that they're owed for balance of a payment. So now the resident will actually pick up the tax on it from this point forward. Does everybody understand that? Did I explain it clear enough? So and it's in the amount of five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents. So it's going back to Toyota because the the person bought the vehicle. So five sixty-seven point four zero.
Can I interrupt for a moment?
Yes.
I don't think the owl is there.
It should be because they're up.
Well, it's only picking you up.
It's only picking you up, it's not picking up anyone else speaking. That's the only reason why I'm up here.
Oh, are we muted? Are we muted? Hold on. Is there a is there a power button on that?
Yeah, there is, and I've turned it on, but it doesn't.
The computer is, the computer needs to be moved over to the mouse. It's like the computer panel.
Oh, I say, okay, all right, let's talk, let's look at you. Well, because I'm doing, if I do this, it's going to move with, yeah.
Go to your settings and just pick the mouse instead of your, pick the mouse, the owl, instead of your computer.
Pick the mouse, the owl, we got a lot of animals going on here. I know, right? Where am I going? Let's see. I thought it hooted at me when I went on, when I turned it on, it it boots when you plug it in. I'm not lying. I'm not muted, I'm not, the camera's on, I'm not muted.
They also not picking up.
No power.
There's no power to it.
That's all right.
People.
There you go.
Jesus.
Who's the reason why to put it on the edge?
It would be a high support.
You're right, turn it on and off, try again. Okay, we got it. We should be okay now. The eyes are blinking. The eyes are blinking, okay. All right.
I told you. Okay. Oh, there we go, we've got the room now. Okay, perfect, perfect. Thank you for the catch. Okay, can I get a motion to approve that tax refund? I will move to approve the tax refund. A second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And you do have the list of cemetery deeds, there were, there were several, there are six. If you'd like to look them over, we have a copy of it, so you have that. Stephen Barnes, grade two, and Lot fifty-four of section C, Donald and Elizabeth Tolberg, grades one and two in row eleven of section C, map A six-six-four. Michael Rowe, grade number three in row B, area D, map A ten thirty-two. John and Susan Woburnek, grades five and six in row J of section C, map A six-six-four. I'm not going to pronounce this correctly, but I will give it my best shot. Pennett Rotitis Lapatis grave nine in row B, area D, map A ten thirty-two, and Marguerite Leonard, grave nine in row C, area B, map A ten thirty-two. Can I get a motion to approve the cemetery streets?
So.
Second, second.
What do we charge for a plot?
I believe it's eight hundred.
Plus eight hundred to get buried as well?
I believe that's what they charge to take the the plot. Have a second? Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So moved and passed. Russell Road, anything, Boone?
No, no update at this time.
Okay. The solar farm, have we heard anything about a final closure on that?
The there's a stay in place until they'll buy one.
Yeah.
And I reached out to attorney Mashad, waiting to hear from him, he's still, his responses, he's still working with the property owner, trying to conclude the purchase of the property.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Simpson Property, we are in the home stretch. I think we see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes, so there was a delay there caused by, there was a when the town acquired the Carrington property that everything that needed to be done was not done. So I had to get a title policy in favor of the state for its easement, conservation easement, which was delayed a bit because we had to get certain documentation. So that, everything's been submitted now to the state, it's at the attorney general's office under review. Once we conclude the Carrington property, Simpson is set to proceed.
Okay.
So I'm hopeful we'll get back from the AG within the next two weeks. And I'm optimistic that we'll be moving this matter off the agenda by the start of the fiscal year.
You promise?
Yes.
I'm not going to hold it to it.
That's my goal.
That is, well, we've had our goal and just keep shoving it along a little bit, but we're getting closer.
Yes, we are getting closer to it.
We are definitely getting closer. Thank you.
Question about, just going back to the number six, the solar farm, is, are there any identified barriers or is it just regular?
If any issues remain between the two private parties, so they haven't been forthcoming and tell me what they're discussing.
It's private property, so it's a prop, private deal between the company and the property owner. So we're just waiting to hear because there's a stay with the siding council that was on that other piece of property, so we're hoping that that's.
So you haven't heard of any sort of theory?
Haven't heard of any?
No, nothing, nothing to suggest it's not going to happen.
Okay, thank you, that's.
But that.
Yeah, that kind of cut out.
Yeah. Okay, so Don, I think outside organizations with and club storage, I think that was a concern we had.
Okay, so as you guys know, we're redoing the gym, we're redoing the stage, we know how to work up here. We're trying to get the stage back to a stage, it's a functional stage. There's a lot of stuff that is stored on the stage in the gym, outside vendors that we don't own, we don't control. Frankly, we don't make any money on. The wrestling show, they do once a quarter, whatever, ping pong. But we store all the stuff, these, you know, twenty-foot-high, five-hundred-pound pieces of wood that are, that we drive across and they bring out. Right now, it's stored on the stage or stored in the gym, there's really no, no room for that. We don't make any money on it. They make a lot of money on it. Because it's in our building, we're liable. So there's eight ping pong tables that, I don't know, a thousand dollars, a couple thousand dollars a piece, whatever the word, amongst other stuff that goes along with it. If something happens, we're liable, we have to pay for it, we have to replace it, whatever. We don't have room for storage and stuff like that. And I don't think we should store stuff like that in a building. If you want to have a show, bring it, bring it back, bring it back again when you want to have another show. As far as the big wrestling stuff, they stored it on the stage and they drag it across the stage and they drop it down onto the gym floor. It took six of us to move it. If you guys want pictures, I'll go take a picture of it. It's nothing we should have in the building. In my opinion, obviously, the board of selectmen should make that decision. We don't own it. If we wreck it, we pay for it.
And if the kids are playing in the gym, depending on how it's stored,
Right.
somebody could get hurt.
You guys, you guys are all into the, you know, stuff, you know, stuff in the gym, in the back corner, those pads with all the ping pong tables, they're not ours. If that falls on somebody, we get sued. If it falls on somebody, we replace it and get sued. So, you know, it's, it's your decision.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Because I can you repeat, I think you said already, but who's, who's stuff, who belongs?
Okay, they, okay. Okay, they do wrestling shows here, I don't know if it's quarterly, a few times a year, they do a wrestling show. They have these big pieces of wood, they make like a ramp and tables and chairs, they store it, they rest it for the props. They store it up on the stage.
But they do bring in the ring when they come.
Yeah, they bring the ring, when they, they store it, they're too big to basically move every time they do it. So we have to store it on our stage, then they drag it across the stage. We don't have the room.
Are they like at a high school or like?
No, it's an outside.
It's an outside organization, we get a hundred bucks and they charge twenty-five dollars a ticket. It's not about the money, to me, because I, you know, that's, that's not my purview is the money, my purview is the storage and the responsibility. If something happens to it, we're going to buy them new stuff. It happens to eight or ten ping pong tables and those, all those little nets and stuff that they use for the ping pong, which as far as I know, we don't get any revenue from that.
And I think there's a timeframe where they play on Sundays for for a set amount of time.
And it's the wrestling people that are using?
No, it's two different.
No, that's a thing, it's a wrestle. But I don't want, no, ping pong's not, ping pong's a private concern. But again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not selecting just ping pong or wrestling, it's, it's in general. Should we store outside concerns in our building that we can't control and if something happens to it, we, we have to pay for it? We have to pay to replace it. If somebody gets hurt, we get sued and they also pay to replace it. And frankly, there's no storage. I mean, we're putting all this money into storage for our stuff.
I was going to suggest, at a minimum, because I don't know what the history is and how long they've been here, but at a minimum, there should be a license agreement between the organization and the town that grants them the permit, grants them the permission if you want them to be able to store and relieves the town of liability if they have damage.
See, the problem with that. Problem with that, if, if, if we store all these ping pong tables or whatever and it falls on a kid, they're not ours, well, too bad, we get sued anyway. And then we buy new ping pong tables. Same with the wrestling stuff. I mean, if you want to use our gym like everybody else does, they come, they bring the stuff, at the end of the event, they take the stuff home with them. Now, that's not capable with the wrestling or the ping pong, well, then they can find another place, I mean.
Are there other groups? I know years ago, the Cub Scouts used to keep at least one of those giant drawers under the stage.
Right now, everything is gone.
They don't keep their stuff here anymore?
But it's also, they're also a local organization.
Right.
These are outside.
They're also a nonprofit.
Right.
They're not making money, they're not storing stuff here and then selling stuff to somebody else. And again, that's, that's not, that I don't care.
I'm saying, we went with the policy, it's either nobody does it or only local organizations or.
Well.
But the Cub Scouts aren't, aren't storing stuff here anymore?
They're not because, because we're.
Yeah.
Oh, there will be room if you guys wanted to let them bring stuff.
But we also have set some parameters, because when we did go to empty, there was food in there that mice had gotten into and things, so that, so we have to have some parameters as to what's actually being stored in there, so.
I think it was like the Pinewood Derby track.
Yeah, I mean, because like I said, like he said, they're a nonprofit local organization, these other two that he's talking about have no real affiliation to the town.
Like if I was a magician, I want to have a band, I could store my equipment here and once a month play and make money and then you guys store my stuff. You know, that'd be great for me.
So if, if you tell wrestling, for example, or ping pong, you got to take your stuff away and bring it back, then that's too much hassle. I'm not going to use your your fit, and then do we care? I mean, just.
And again, I don't, I don't want to pick on a certain particular event, but I say wrestling, for instance, they do it, say quarterly. We charge them a hundred bucks. We pay a janitor, a custodian, sorry, we pay custodian three, four hours to set up, three, four hours to break down. We're certainly not making any money. The whole idea is not to make money, I mean, it's, you know, it is a community thing, but the people that own the wrestling are charging, you know, a hundred people, twenty-five dollars a person to come and watch the event. And then we're paying to set it up, to set it, to break it down and store the stuff. The, the problem that I have is it took four or five of us to get it off the stage, onto the floor, to drag it across, to redo the stage. It's not like it's a little, you know, something like this, this, if you guys want to pitch it, it's fifty-foot-high, five-foot-wide lumber.
So these people don't have these shows anywhere else? They don't need this?
The wrestling shows do go other venues. Ping pong, I don't know, because unless they have a bunch of tables set up at other venues, I just know of what they have here.
So when they have an event at another venue, do they come get their equipment here and take it to the other venue?
I don't know. I mean, well, they are.
The wrestling, no, the wrestling's with stash in the corner.
So they must have other setups for the other venues, I don't know, but that, this has just sort of been placed here.
Obviously, I'm looking at it from a liability and a storage issue. And then drag it across the refinished stage, home to refinish the stage.
All right, I think this might require a little additional follow-up conversation. Just maybe we can maybe check meeting with Janice, she might know who the ping pong people, say that ten times fast, the ping pong people are.
Well, right now, the wrestling stuff's in the way. The ping pong stuff is on wheels, but it's, it's in the corner, then it gets full and it gets in the corner, it's but again, whatever you guys want to do.
Yes, my thoughts on those two, if they're a problem, we don't have room for them, then they can't, they can't be here. I'm okay with that. I just don't want to accidentally go up with a policy that, you know, hurts a local.
Well, no, you wouldn't want to hurt the Cub Scouts or the, you know, the, the, whoever else, there's no, they have to source anything there, but.
But these are two.
These are, these are four problems.
Yeah.
And like I said, if, if, if the people want to start using the stage again as a stage, you can't use it, you can't use it if it's just a closet.
Which, right, it's been a closet for a lot of years.
Do you think if we didn't store this stuff, that there would be room to store the voting stuff? Like so that it's more easily?
The voting stuff is in a closet, it's underneath, there's more than a hoop, people stuff like.
Yeah, we're accommodating.
That's not, and we're putting an addition on that they can store more stuff.
Yeah.
But I'll take a picture if you guys want, this thing is fifteen-foot-high and five-foot-wide.
After the meeting, we can go.
Actually, that's one piece, there's three pieces. And I'm not picking on the wrestling, it's just.
So let me ask you, if the wrestling people said, Paul, listen, I'm not, I'm not doing, we'll take our stuff and we're not doing this show here, is that okay with you?
I have no, I'm not for or against wrestling, if we decide that it's too cumbersome and a liability, I will go with whatever you guys.
I mean, they can have the show here, just bring your stuff.
Or with ping pong too, as well, we're not, we're not banning them, we're just saying you can't store it.
I mean, it's easier for them to leave it here till next time, but is it our responsibility?
Yeah, I mean, I think that your point about liability is, is important to consider.
If you guys want to do a road trip after the meeting, I'll show you what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we've done, okay.
Yeah, okay, so we, do you want to make any decision now or do you want to hold this to the next meeting?
Well, here's my problem.
Oh, we, yes.
We'll be doing, we'll be doing the new floor within three weeks, hopefully. And then we're not dragging this thing across on our floor, we're putting thirty-five thousand dollar floor in our building, I'm not dragging this four-hundred-pound, fifteen-foot-high wood thing across the floor.
Can I ask?
I'll put it outside.
When we, we knew we were renovating, like no one told these people to come get it just for convenience with the renovation?
It didn't cross my mind, to be honest with you, and the ping pong tables on wheels, they were easy enough to kind of shift, but I don't think we realized how heavy this thing was until they had to go and move it.
It's sort of good timing, right?
Right, and that's why we brought this up now is because this has become a massive and the floor's got to get done, so.
And stage.
And the stage.
It sounds like you're kind of answering your own question.
You know, my people, like I said.
So.
Unless you want the floor wrecked, you, you got to tell them to remove the stuff.
So if we vote to say it can no longer be stored here, then it would be your next chore or whatever would be to contact whoever's.
If you want, I think it's not a big deal, but I, I don't have the authority to do that.
Unless.
Once I do, then I will.
So. So do you have to wait for them to take the stuff out before you can proceed with the floor? Like, right, I mean, ideally.
Might have to give them a timeframe to remove it.
I'm going to take a picture when I'm talking about, I'll be back in two minutes, you good? We'll, we'll.
It sounds like it's a problem, you know.
It, it.
Yeah, it may have been delay, you can't say you have to have everything out tomorrow.
I mean, I don't see the point of storing stuff for, you know.
And for a while, they were jamming them in the electric closet, which is not good because you have to have so much footage between, you know, the the table and the, all the electric stuff on the wall, so that was not a good thing either. And the biggest concern is when the kids are in there running around and playing, you know, even though we might have padding around it, if they hit the pads the right way, the pads are going to fall over. So you know, it's a.
I, I mean, I, I think it sounds like we're probably all in agreement here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For those two organizations, then if other ones are causing a problem.
Yeah, well, really, those are the only two outside ones that we're aware of that are really storing anything of, of consequence.
Right.
But any of the other organizations are town affiliated, like the Boy Scouts. But like I say, when we opened it up to, to move stuff, there was, there was mice droppings and things that were like, this can't be kept in here, so. But here it does, okay. We believe you.
So there's all the ping pong stuff. There's eight or ten tables and then all the nets and the pads. And then there's the wrestling stuff, as you can see, it's twelve-foot-high and.
It's wood?
Wood, solid wood, plywood two-by-fours.
I've seen the ping pong stuff, so I know exactly what that is, I just want to know. So this was under the?
This is not that one, they were driving across the stage and dropping it to the floor.
It would almost be like a ramp going from a stage to the ring.
So, now that, that's, yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
So now you have a visual of what he's, what he's referring to.
I can see why you wouldn't want to drag that on a new, you know, stage or floor, yeah, that, so.
I'm leaving it up to you guys, you can make a motion to one way or the other.
And we've been talking, like, we've been talking about plastics, we don't ruin it because we don't take the responsibility.
Because, yeah, there's been a lot of work being done in the gym, so we've tried to protect everything.
Move that the large items belonging to the wrestling and ping pong groups can't be, can't be stored in the town hall anymore. There's going to have room.
Remember that motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay, any other conversation or question?
The only thing I can think of is do we have a deadline or just to say?
Well, I think he knows the timeline with the flooring, so I, I think I will, Don, I will leave it up to you as far as a timeline, we, all in favor?
I, I can't, I'll contact the wrestling people, I'll contact the ping pong people and tell them, listen, sorry, you can have your event planner, talk to the event planner, but bring it in, take it out.
Okay. Okay.
But they're coming to get your stuff themselves, I'm not moving it.
Right, no, we're not responsible.
I'm not responsible. We had a couple of plasters, we had to move it ten times.
What you might, you might say to them, give them a period of time, reasonable period of time, and if they don't retrieve it by that point, they're going to consider it abandoned.
Okay.
And you can dispose of it.
Okay.
Ooh, you're harsh.
Well, what are you going to do, what are you going to do?
No, no, that's fine.
You're within an email.
Yeah, no, I'll email.
An email, so you have a record of when and what you told them.
Okay.
Okay.
So now.
You're actually, you're actually up again.
I'm up again, hold on. So now, I, I missed your vote, is it outside rankings or just specifically?
Just, just those two.
Right now, right now, those two, because those are the two you brought forward, so.
The only two I know that are in the building right now.
And I think if other organizations come to do an event, we will make it clear to them that they, if they are bringing it, they are taking it. So we will not make a habit of storing, we're outside groups. You are up next with Mesa.
Oh, okay, so Lena is not here. So there's a, there's a pond at the end of Mesa Drive, Mesa Road, that when the subdivision was built, the town took possession of this pond. Don't know why, but they did.
It's the detention pond, right, for that?
It's, it's the far end on the left. Well, right now, the beavers are ravaging the pond, they're ravaging the whole area. If you drive by, there's trees, it, it's a mess.
It's flooding and bad.
Some years back, and I'm not sure how many years back, planning and zoning and inland wetlands hired this company, I don't have the name. To, to take care of it, to, they, they put a screen over the inlet and they try to, you know, because you can't do the beavers because they're protected. So they took, they took care of it, sort of get it dammed up, they would break the dams down, they would put little things in front of the dams, but they wanted to flood the whole neighborhood. Well, the beavers have since figured that out and they dam. So this company wants to come in, and again, I don't know the name of that, they'll put a pipe, twelve-inch pipe from the pond through the wetlands to another drainage area and put like, you know, put a structure with, with a screen over it so the water can overflow into this, into the wetlands.
It's called Beaver Solutions.
Beaver Solutions, okay. So Beaver Solutions approached, well, they, they've been paid from inland's wetlands and or planning and zoning, pays a yearly fee to maintain this thing they built years back. It's not, it's not working anymore. So they want roughly, Paul, twenty-five hundred dollars. I was leaning, Lena had all the answers.
Twenty-nine, twenty-six.
Twenty-hundred dollars, they want to take the structure because they're now the overflow, pipe it forty feet into the woods, to the wetlands or to whatever. Move the overflow forty feet away to outsmart the beavers. And we need permission to do that. They need permission to do that. They asked Public Works to buy the pipe, we purchased the pipe, it was about seven hundred bucks for forty feet of twelve-inch PVC pipe. They're crediting us on that twenty-nine hundred for the pipe. So we were able to save a couple hundred bucks, they were going to charge a thousand dollars for the pipe or whatever the numbers were. But anyway, so they want, they want permission to do this. Planning and zoning is okay with it. It was wetlands, I don't believe has approached it yet because you guys haven't sent it to them yet. But this is something that has to has to get done, from what they tell.
Does, does anyone know what, how long ago they put in that structure?
Karen may know.
Karen, do you remember?
I don't want to, maybe it's when when they first put the road and I think, and the, the land was conquered and the detention base was fitted, and doesn't the road go over it?
The road, oh, no, the road goes around, it goes around, but we just repaved it all last year, so it's at least twenty years.
Yeah.
All, it's all of twenty years.
And I think that also that the Land Trust has an interest in the, in a trail, like a trail easement across that area, down to the ponds and then back up the hill and.
But, but either way, the, the beavers have overcome it, so instead of kidnapping, either kidnapped the beavers.
They want to be.
And relocate them.
And relocate them, or we have to spend a three grand to fix this. And then there's also a yearly fee, but again, I think that's it, which is what we're just planning and zoning. There's a yearly fee to take care of this thing.
The annual maintenance is maintained by the inland wetland budget on a, every year.
It's like four rounds a year or something.
It's between four and six hundred dollars a year, yes.
But again, twenty-something years ago, the town took possession, so it's our property, so there's nothing, there's really nothing we can do.
So the only reason I asked about the timing of it is because if, am I right, that Beaver Solutions Company, they're the ones that installed that, the system in the first place, I was just wondering, is there a warranty or anything like that? You know, because the time may have passed.
Well, yeah.
There were no beavers back in the beginning.
A nice home and.
Okay, I see.
Raked chaos since, so.
That, that, that actually makes sense, right?
Um, can I get a motion to approve the request for this, uh, prepared?
I'll, I'll move to, um, to, um. Uh, approve that, the amount twenty, is it twenty-nine, twenty-six, twenty-nine, twenty-six? Or is it minus the seven hundred?
No, no, that, that includes. That's the proposal they gave us was twenty-nine, twenty-six, do we anticipate that this would change, since this was?
That was their price, but they said they would tread with us if we bought the pipe, so. Basically, it's twenty-nine, twenty-six overall. But it has to go, obviously has to go to the ends of it.
Second.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, um, and now, you've been waiting so patiently.
Yeah.
Um, Shane, right? Shane has an Eagle Scout project with regard to the fencing at the horse rings, right?
Yes.
What's your last name, Shane?
Johnson.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
Yeah, of course, so, um, I'm Shane, Troop nine thirty-one, and I'm a junior at ME High, and I do my Eagle Scout project. And we've done like the, the shows at the Horse Ring Harvest Fest, where I've been there a lot of my life. And I've realized that a lot of the boards are rotten and paint is shit, so. My Eagle Scout project is gonna be replacing, painting, priming many of the boards that are rotten. Um, each of the fences at the Bethany Airport. And I wanted to come here, tell you guys, see if I need any permits, any permissions. Do so, I already have a list of materials, planning, I. Were, have workdays already planned out, so.
Basically, you do need the board's permission to give our blessing to it, and then you can work with Mr. Shay. They and the building department, if there are any other, like you said, permits or things that you might need to do the project, okay? So can I have a motion to approve this project?
You, um, that's a lot of work, are you recruiting any helpers?
Yeah, I have all the guy in the troop, and then some of the adults.
Get some adults too.
Now, as far as funding for the project. Um, because obviously if you're replacing any of the, the boards and stuff.
So I did the math, and it's about seven hundred fifty, about fifty dollars for all of it, but we have a source for the paint and primer. Through one of my dad's friends.
That's one thing that we've got, and then we, he was thinking of some ideas.
Also maybe contacting the Lions Club for the boards.
Okay, do, do you have an idea of how many boards, because you said just the one budget?
I have a whole list of all that, I need twenty-three, two by eight, or, uh, two by sixteen boards.
Okay, alright, so you got, you got your work cut out for you.
Yeah.
Nice, and hopefully you'll get a lot of nice weather, so that it doesn't delay the project. Alright, so can I have a motion, and then we can continue to ask questions if we want. Motion to approve this project? Second, second, okay. Any other comments or questions for, for Shane?
Well, I just wanted, can I say, I wanna just congratulate you, because I think being a junior. You must have done a lot of work to get to this point.
Yeah.
And.
And by eighteen, you have to be done, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I went to that other ceremony. It was wonderful.
Yeah, it was, that was a good ceremony.
Hopefully I'll be going to yours.
So Home Depot, Lowe's, will, if you go to them, they'll give you. Certain amount, but, but you know, the managers are, you know, allowed a hundred dollars, whatever it is, you can just go to multiple ones. You know, they, they want you to give them pictures, like send them a letter afterwards, they'll, they'll see like a bulletin board with all kinds of. But that might be a good way to get some lumber and.
Supplies, nails and things like that, sure.
If you're running short, um, you know, if you're looking at the lines and stuff, then come back to the town.
Have any slight budget leeway to, to assist him in this project?
I also spoke to the Lions, and they said approached the Lions, and they'd be happy to help.
Did, were you talking about caps? Okay, okay, that's fine. So we have, oh.
Are these boards gonna be pressure treated?
That's something that we wanted to, once we, we had the ability to talk to Mr. Shay about that, so that they match what's, either what's already there. Because we started with prime, you know, and paint on the pressure treated.
Well, I got a quick thing on that, years back, you couldn't use pressure treated on horse brings because of the. For now, because they don't make it like they used to make it, pressure treated is more than acceptable, I believe Sharon, right?
Yeah, and it's, we used it.
Yeah, pressure treated is more, it's, it's, ob- obviously a better choice, because it lasts longer, it's made to be outside. When it was arsenic and everything else, then no, the horse, but if your horse is eating wood, then you got more issues than.
Our whole barn, they don't even eat it, so.
Yes, but yeah, but pressure treated would be the. Because it'll last five.
If it picks through a lot of them, then.
So, yeah, okay, so, um, all in favor? Okay, so now you can work with Mr. Shay, and he will guide you along the way with. Any other, you can, the building department, any possible permits that are needed, and we wish you well and keep us posted, no, no pun intended.
When, when, when you turn it? March eighth.
Oh, so you know, so you're plenty of time, because I know the last Eagle Scout was like. I, I get it by like, next Saturday. Yeah, 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 so, so you have plenty of time.
Thank you all. I have an AP test to study for, if you guys. Environmental science.
Oh, okay, good luck, good luck.
Thank you.
Coming, guys.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay, um, I have purchase and installation of a generator and propane tanks at center station, I think we are. I don't wanna say backtracking, but I know we had so many items going forward at the last meeting that I think this one kind of slipped. So it is on the call. For approval at the town meeting, we just need to give it our, our final blessing, basically, so I just need a motion to approve it, to be on the call, which. Time wise, it's already there, it should have been approved at the special meeting, but like I said, we had so many items, it sort of slipped.
This, this is what, generator?
The generator and propane tanks for center station.
And what's the dollar amount?
I think it's not to exceed twenty.
Change eighteen, but not to exceed twenty. And it was ARCA funds, there's. So it's not gonna rate right.
Is that why it was already on the history?
I'll be under twenty, the Board of Finance could have said, just do it, but.
I, the goal to the town meeting, sorry.
The, um, item eleven, the purchase and installation of the generator and propane tanks at the center station, uh, to the town event.
A second.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Perfect. Um, acceptance of the gift of real property. We actually were able to get in contact with the daughter of the woman who owns the house with the, the shack with the tarp.
Oh, wow.
Yes, it was a, it was a little lot of Googling. Because eight twenty-nine is the gift. So, and we actually reached out to the gentleman on the other side. Oh, Litchfield, sorry. Kind of near Ian Drive. Near Ian Drive. So. We can accept the gift, and then what will happen is it goes forward, unfortunately, the timing is off, but we can't, it's not on the fall. I mean, although it is an annual meeting, it potentially could be motions to be added, because it's not a special meeting, if we want to at least. Have it accepted, and then when we finally. You know, have final contact with the abutters, we can move forward and not have to wait for. Another town meeting to, to move forward, is that?
Yes, I, I spoke with the daughter today.
You did?
She's gonna speak to her mother again on Mother's Day, uh, and clarify some things that she had some confusion about. Uh, and, uh, so if, in accordance with section forty-one dash one of your ordinances, you can. This board has the authority to accept the gift upon a finding that there is no annual, uh, cost to the town, if there is an annual cost, then you have. So believe this has been determined, that there is no annual cost, so this board can accept it, so then the town will become the owner of this. Point nine acres. And the intent. You de-restrict the, the parcel, then, uh, do a lot line revision to basically subdivide it. And give it to each of the adjoiningers, a portion to each of the adjoiningers, which would require a town meeting approval to do. But in doing so, it would make these two parcels conforming lots. So it would bring them more into compliance with our current zone. Uh, and it would resolve some side yard issues and things like that, so that's the, kind of the, the long range plan with it, so the town's ownership would be short-lived.
Can you, uh, I, I think I missed, but you said you spoke to the daughter?
Yes.
What, what daughter, the, of, not the person with the gifting?
And you already spoke to the, uh, the other.
On the other side, yes, what, what's happening is, he would potentially take point two of this point nine. Because he doesn't have a proper setback right now. So this would make him conforming with a proper setback, the point seven that is left. Would be adjoined to the point, the tar, eight, which would give it a one point five, which would then make it a conforming building lot.
Right, so.
If I did my math correct.
Yeah, so eight twenty-nine is the gifted parcel.
Right.
Eight forty-one, it would be proposed ultimately to, to give the point two, and then eight nineteen, the point seven.
Right, that would be the ultimate goal.
Right, and, and in order to protect the land, to keep it more, it would be deed restricted, so you'd never have a third house in there, but it could be used. By the existing owners or properties for purposes of expansion or.
To build down what's there and put up one house, as opposed to two houses.
So you have the people on either side of the house, that's.
Well, it's a vacant lot that's being.
Right, I, right, the vacant lot, and, and we don't have answers yet from either one on what do they want?
Eight forty-one has agreed to. Eight nineteen is owned by elderly woman who was. Was confused about what this was gonna cost her.
Right.
And I said, you know, the pro- proposal would be to convey it, since we're getting it at no cost. We would do what's necessary to convey it out at no cost, because ultimately, right now, the town's not getting taxes on it, because taxes are in default. It's a couple hundred dollars a year, by getting this done, done, it cleans up a couple of zoning issues. And it puts it on to tax rules where the tax assessor said, the increase to eight forty-one would be about. Three hundred dollars a year, and the increase to eight nineteen would be about five hundred dollars a year at the current mill rate based upon the. So that would fluctuate every year, but it would be at least. Resolve an existing non-payment issue, resolve a side yard issue, and bring the other parcel.
So did you get a sense that the daughter understood the benefit?
After we discussed it today and I clarified the concerns, uh, it sounded like Mother's Day was going to be a, uh, much easier discussion.
So basically, what we need to, to do tonight is approve acceptance of the gift of, of the property. Of a twenty-nine Litchfield. And then we can move forward with the other.
So, so Paula, do you wanna do that without knowing about eight nineteen, and whether they are gonna accept the, the point seven? Well. I, what's the downside, I'm just trying to think this through, what's the downside, the downside is the town.
You're right, I mean, ultimately, if the town acquires the land. Benefit to the town acquiring the land is that the town that controls, uh, and prevents potential development there. Uh, because it is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, uh, you could immediately. Address, again, just thinking out of the box here, uh, once the town owns it, then it can sit for as long it ta- as long as it takes. But you could immediately address that, uh, issue, the side yard issue, I think, forty-one, the town would then be left at point seven. If the existing owner didn't want it, then potentially, uh, uh, a future owner of eight nineteen might be interested in it. Uh, you know, so it's not necessarily an impermeability acquisition, because there's no real public benefit to it. But, uh, other than bringing lots into conformity, uh, so. You, you could approve it, uh, we're not gonna close on this tomorrow, uh, but we could also, you could approve it, you know. Uh, with, with a sixty or ninety day due diligence for us to, you know, get this, I, I'm confident that. Next week, we're gonna hear back from the owner of eight nineteen with an answer. So, uh, I don't know if there was a timeline on the gift.
No.
Right.
No, there wasn't, she just eager to give it to the town, so we wanted to make sure we do it the right way, so that the town can. Do the right thing, and, and if the abutters, um, you know, it makes them conforming, I think it's to their benefit. Um, as well.
Because this is gonna require another town meeting, so I don't know when your next town meeting is gonna be.
Well, no one knows at this moment in time, I just wanna get through May twentieth.
Can I ask you a question or two on that? Does this land abut any trails or any land trust or anything?
No, it.
Is there any wetlands, is it a nice clean piece of property?
There's, there are wetlands.
So it's, it's not, it's not a building lot?
I think it's not, not all wet, right? Potentially could get a house on it, but.
A small house.
Yeah.
Take it and give it away. Make it go away.
That's, that's, that's the recommendation.
And because right now, eight forty-one is literally has, like sheds or whatever, right on their property line. So they don't have a proper setback, so to give point two to that. Owner would give them a proper setback. And then the point seven left, added to the point eight, would, if they, if they so choose to accept. And make it one point five now, gives them a conforming building lot.
But if they don't, it's just a piece of property.
But like you said, you know, if that person decides to sell the point seven.
When I was talking to the owners of eight forty-one, uh, eight nineteen is in need of rehabilitation. Uh, and, uh, you know, and it'll probably be more desirable for the. Current property owner, for purposes of sale, to sell something that someone might be able to. Remove the existing structure and build, uh, a conforming, on a conforming lot. Because it didn't, at least the way the owners of eight forty-one, the, the, you know, it, it didn't sound like it was a. Uh, a pleasant view.
Correct, you're right, so. So did we want a motion to accept the gift?
Okay, you, you, but you were expressing some concerns about waiting to hear from one.
I mean, I've been discussing it further, I, I'm okay.
There is really no downside to it, because we will only do the right thing by owner and town, you know, so.
Bob, do you have concerns, do you have concerns about that?
No, I. And all you're doing tonight is accepting, then you'd have to come back with the next phase, which would be. A plan to convey it, which would go for eight twenty, would then have to go for eight twenty-four. And then, so the whole, all we're doing tonight is accepting under, uh, the authority granted under forty-one dash one.
And then it allows us to move forward with that, with whatever steps might be to be taken.
Which is a big decision, right, because we're deciding, do we want this property to be Bethany's issue or not?
I suspect you're gonna, it's gonna be your issue through foreclosure or through.
Right, yeah, because right now taxes have not been paid, I believe, for three years, so it's almost seven hundred dollars in back taxes.
With an, with an expression of the owner not to pay.
Right.
So you either have to let it sit there, and every fifteen years, one year will drop off, and you're never gonna get your three hundred dollars in taxes. Or you're going to have to take it eventually to foreclosure, so.
It's just kind of avoids all of that.
Yeah, it avoids five thousand dollars of legal expense. Yeah, just with eight twenty-nine.
Eight twenty-nine is the gift.
Yes.
Eight nineteen is to be a butter to the left, and eight forty-one is the butter to the right.
I moved that the town accept the gift of real property, uh, known as eight twenty-nine Litchfield Turnpike.
I second the motion.
Any other comments or questions or concerns? You're not all in favor? Okay, then we will, then we will do what we need to move forward with that, we will notify the owner appropriately and, um. Move forward, uh, obviously, number thirteen is on hold until after the town. Move forward, uh obviously, number thirteen is on hold until after the town meeting. Um and then we have our grants.
Okay, Arpa. I'm sorry, just just one second, I was wondering, can you explain why this is um thirteen is on hold, I wasn't sure, it was.
I just wanna see what, once the budget passes, I wanna put together. A criteria of what the group will do, like is it an educational group to helping people understand. How to um separate things um. You know, and then a- any other pieces that would be helpful um with regard to recycling and fashion. Uh there was something else I want to, oh, we are, a postcard is gonna go out tomorrow, I believe, in mail. With regard to an informational meeting next Wednesday night. Here in the commission room at seven o'clock, uh for anyone who either wasn't at the town budget hearing. Or who just has had some questions over the past few weeks and wants some clarification. Because but there aren't, there isn't gonna be discussion about options, because that is now off the table, because the budget has been approved by the Board of Finance. And going forward to the town for approval as is. If it does not pass, people are on their own. So if if people make a squawk about pulling it out of the budget. Everybody is on their own, because there are no other options. The options were discussed at the public budget hearing. And people made their comments and asked their questions, but now that budget was approved by the Board of Finance. And that's what's going forward to the town for approval, um because we cannot add things back into the budget at. At the meeting.
So when is the internal meeting, what's the date?
It's the fifteenth, it's next Wednesday, it'll be here in the commission room at seven o'clock. Well, you know, we just, um somebody had made a comment that it was mentioned at the hearing, I don't recall, but. Um I said, you know what, we're gonna give people another opportunity to ask some questions, but there are no changes, yeah, yeah, yeah. But there can be no changes at this point, so. Sharon, correct me if I'm wrong in any of that.
I know, you're right, no, they asked us to put a uh. Center of trash.
Oh, like a cha- a transfer station?
Yeah, transfer station, so we can't go to accepting trash.
Right.
Um so our only two options now are what's been proposed. Or which is, you know, we pick up both. Or we pick up nothing.
Right.
It's either or.
Thank you for confirming.
This meeting is going to be about how it will work.
And J R, the um gentleman, and R W S, um I asked him, I reached out to him and he said he'd be happy to be there to answer any questions as well, so.
So so thank you, I I really just couldn't under- don't really understand why the the. The creation of this committee is on hold, because.
Well, I haven't reached out to everybody yet as well, so I I, you know, I wanna look at who was on it previously, who's still interested. Um and there are a couple of other people that weren't on it previously that are interested, so um I wanna make sure that we don't. Just throw it together and do it hastily, I wanna make sure it's put together properly.
I could just, because my, I, as I've said many times, I don't know a lot about this and it's complicated.
Yeah, and I think Don was actually on the previous group, so I may um may want to have him back on it, as he's had previous experience with the group, so.
I find it to be very complicated, the the whole uh how this works and what options are out there, I I find it to be very complicated. I've tried to begin um learning as much as I can about it, but um it is complicated, so I just think. You know, if there's a lot to learn and um.
I I think once people get to know what they can and cannot throw in their likely recycling and what and what is actually trash. Um I I think it will become pretty second nature, um but it is a little bit of a learning curve, so. That's why we're gonna have this other meeting, and then if we put this group together, it'll help educate, maybe we can have something in the bulletin on a regular basis. To help educate people, um you know, as well, so. Um and now our grants.
All right, um Arpa projects are wrapping up, there is a very small dollar amount that is. Left to be determined as to what it's going to be used for. Um the Board of Finance did re- review all of. The open projects at their meeting last month, so that we know exactly where we stand. Um steep, the paving is done and the building renovation. For the Public Works is just about ready to go out to bid, that is my understanding in front um on that today. Um Cabrera, there are two three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grants, the first one for the windows is complete. Um the final closeout paperwork is being processed right now to submit for that. The gym is still under construction and we are with any luck about. Six weeks out on completion with that one. Um the DeLoro HUD grant work is underway on that, it is a cumbersome process to get reimbursed. HUD is not easy to work with, but we are doing our best. Um the trip grant, um that. We have worked with Sprague and we have. We're still waiting on guidance for the new directions, the new instructions for how to submit the grant for next year. But at at the same time, we have, we have also taken that project. And we have submitted it through Rosa DeLoro's office for this year's federal grant. Um there are. Letters of support that need to go in with this, um Chief Kogle has.
Who I'm still waiting, he's the only one I'm waiting.
We're waiting to hear from Chief Kogle for his letter of support on it, and it would be very helpful if the. Board of Selectmen were to endorse this project. And I'm sure Paula will have more on that, but I wanna fini- I'm gonna get through the rest of them.
Yeah.
Um there were two grants that were submitted for Robin through the senior in human services. One was a leftover care slash Arpa grant that all senior centers were entitled to funds. So that paperwork has been processed, it should be somewhere between fourteen and fifteen thousand dollars that she can receive for programming. And I don't know if everyone is aware, but every year Bethany does qualify for a small portion. Of a dial-a-ride program, which is a. It's a grant program, while Bethany itself does not see the dollars in their budget. Our money is signed off on an automatic pass-through to go to the Greater New Haven Transit. So we do receive grant funds to help run the dial-a-ride program to help seniors get to where they need to go. And I just wanted everyone to be aware that we are receiving money, just like all the other municipal, most other municipalities. Receive funds for dial-a-ride, we do, but we automatically assign ours over to Greater New Haven Transit. And we did submit the lodge as an emergency shel- shelter. Um through the senators for their lovely um federal earmark projects. Um so but we've, so we hit up both the House and the Senate for earmark projects this year. Time will tell what we get.
Was there some issue with the sprinkler system with that project?
Well, it wasn't that there was an issue, but it came to light after we submitted it last year. That an emergency, that an emergency shelter must have sprinklers, so we reworked the application this year. And the proposal and the pricing to include the sprinklers.
So it was so much uh higher.
It was, it was a price.
Not not as pricey as I thought it would be, it was like two hundred and fifty thousand that sprinklers, which is a lot.
Yeah.
But it'll bring us a bigger performance and then a better shot on getting the grant. The only shot on getting the grant, without sprinklers, we would not have gotten.
Is that, is the sprinkler system a requirement for the grant? Or requirement for.
For emergency shelter.
Any emergency shelter.
Anywhere where people spend the evening, a warm-up shelter, a cooling shelter, a charging shelter, no.
Our current ones don't have sprinklers, right?
No, we don't have, we we don't, well, we don't have.
No, because, well, we were looking under FEMA's guidelines for an emergency shelter, it must have sprinklers. So that's why we added the sprinklers, so it would, we could put it through under, you know, a FEMA guideline.
But you can use a building that doesn't have it to as a shelter.
Not an overnight.
Not an overnight shelter.
Just tell people stay stay out in the blizzard.
Public Works addition has to be a warm station, not a private Public Works. They're they're gonna be getting lounge chairs, not beds. The fire department has lounge chairs, not beds, because they don't have sprinklers in there either, it's insane.
And to tell you how like the this, the grant that we just filed, we found out on a Thursday night. We got emails, so Friday morning we came in and Jen Jen scrambled all weekend to get it in by last Sunday.
Yeah.
And then last night at almost nine o'clock at night, we got another email that said, we need letters of support by Wednesday morning. So they gave us, they gave us three days to get the. The grant in, and they gave us twenty-four hours, well, maybe thirty-six hours to get letters of support for it.
You know, you're reminding me, Paula, of something I think was said at the last meeting about the possibility of having like the brainstorming booth.
Right.
To kind of work on some of it.
It is, it is the top, it is the top of the agenda list for the Board of Finance.
So it's a good idea.
Yeah, to have shovel, well, not.
A drawer, not full, but we did a drawer of stuff ready to say, here you go.
And then it reduces this.
Yeah, you know, well, because we had that trip, because we had the trip grant sort of on hold. When this one popped up, it was like we just need to adjust it and and fix it to be able to submit for this one, so that was basically shovel-ready. To go, so that's why we were able to do it in the three-day window. Um and then I reached out this morning, we got letters from the Fire Marshal, Dave, with regard to the resident trooper for that. Um Will for the Bethany Historical Society, I reached out to uh Brad and Beth Cohen from B and B Transportation, cause the buses ride that road. Um I did one from me, but I will do one from us as the board a- after we've, you know, talked about it at this meeting tonight, so that will reinforce. Um and then I'm waiting for one from uh the Fire Chief, so we have some key people who use the road. Um because Russell Homestead is right there, so that's the Historical Society, buses travel it, emergency vehicles travel it. Um resident troopers travel it, you know, so um and just neighboring people in other towns just traveling through, so it it gets. A fair share of of action, but Beth, when I was talking to Beth Cohen from B and B, she was talking about how the buses are always concerned about the visibility. When they're coming up from toward Amity, that coming up over that hill is always a safety concern for them, because they don't know who's gonna be coming. Back at them, so um you know, emergency vehicles are quite large, our our fire tankers are not tiny, so if they have to head down that way. They have to make sure they're, they got the right passage going on. So, it was good, hopefully we'll, we'll see what happens with that, with the letters of support and everything. Um we are actually at other business to come before the board.
I actually have other business to come before the board.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Now, now that the recycling center will be closed either way on July first. What days and hours would the board like to keep the center open?
Okay, well, I think that's a discussion to have, we need to make that decision right this minute.
Well, well, okay, hold on, so. We need to know for the info meeting on the fifteenth, because that's coming to come up. Someone on the fifteenth, or many people on the fifteenth, they're gonna say, what, you're closing recycling for whatever, we still have to take mattresses and metal and. Batteries and electronics and just that other thing.
Right.
We don't wanna sit there saying, we don't know. So Beacon Falls, which does trash and single stream pickup like we're hopefully doing. They're open once a month on Saturday mornings from seven to noon from April till October. And they really have no issues, they're busier in in April and May, cause people have been stalling all their stuff from then, okay? Um I think that's a little lean, six times a year. Um I think if we start out maybe a Saturday and a Wednesday a month. Or just a Saturday a month, and we'll see what happens, we can always adjust up or adjust down from there. Um from seven to twelve would be a good goal to start, I think. Uh what Beacon Falls does, what Prospect does, Prospect is open once a month on Saturdays. From seven to noon to take stuff that they won't pick up. You know, at that um single stream. We're only taking, like you said, mattresses, metal, refrigerators, things like that, um. Most places, if you buy a new mattress, they'll pick up the old mattress, maybe for ten bucks, mostly for free, same with refrigerators, same with pretty much anything else. So it'll be only basically convenience for people that don't wanna wait or whatever, we still have to remain open for some stuff. It doesn't make sense to have it open too much, because once single stream is gone, it's not gonna be great.
I I don't know if this is it more of an administrative decision as far as being the department head.
It's not my. I'm gonna open it once a month on Saturdays, but it's not up to me, I'm not, I I'm not a decision maker, I'm just a policy follower. So if you guys wanna make a decision, that's fine.
Board have enough information to make that decision? There's, you could possibly outsource this and pay for your, so there, I mean, there's a lot of questions that would go along.
Well, the the problem, the problem we're going to have is we're having a meeting May fifteenth, we're having a meeting May twentieth for the town people to make a decision.
Yeah, but how does this board make a decision without having answers to questions that it probably is gonna require? It's like.
Well, then when they ask the question on the fifteenth, then what are.
I think you're gonna have to say, you say, uh I think the other day at the at the Board of Finance hearing, there was a a slightly different answer, but it was just what was. It just somebody was thinking and you have to express it that way, it's not set in stone. Just say, we're currently thinking about once a month on a Saturday.
But it's just something that has to be brought forward. If you want me to make the decision, tell me I can make.
But we're gonna play it by ear, right?
Can I make that pretty clear?
If if people are complaining, you know, I can't get there, I got the stuff, you know, and once a month isn't enough, we'll do do more. Um.
I think you have to.
You gotta start with something.
With a little more and evaluate. How it's working, and then if you shrink down to less time, but you. Assessed it over a period of time, but this many days is not necessary.
I I would think psychologically, it would be better to go west and then add, listening to complaints, I can't get there, and da-da-da-da. Because if people get used to Wednesday, Saturday, Wednesday, Saturday, and then we're not open on Wednesdays anymore, they're gonna. For good reason, if we say Saturdays once a month, Saturdays twice a month. And people complain that I can't get there on Saturdays, maybe we'll open on a Wednesday, on the third Wednesday of the month or something like that, but again.
So we have to know how we manage it.
Right. No, I could see somebody saying, it's great, you guys are open on the first Saturday of the month, I had other plans that time, and now I, now I gotta wait two months or. You you know, but you know, it's maybe you do it twice a month, first and third, four hours, you know, whatever.
This is why I'm bringing it forward, because it it has, it 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 needs to be.
But as Vin's saying, all all we can do is say what we're currently thinking, and it's either gonna, once you get, see how the usage is. If it's loaded with cars and it's, you know, there there's a line, then you're gonna have to do more, and uh if it's one car an hour, then maybe less is okay.
Well, what what Beacon Falls does, they, and again, whatever, they just, they put out four or five dumpsters on the first Saturday that they're open in April. We will, we will still be doing by appointment. So if we get thirty phone calls, we'll get a second dumpster, we get fifty phone calls, we'll get a third dumpster, we get eighty phone calls, we'll get a fourth dumpster.
Well, you're changing.
Calls, we'll get one dumpster.
You are changing bulky waste now from four, four dumpsters a month to one, right?
Well, no, we, one, two, three or four, it depends.
But but if it's by appointment, aren't you gonna know when you have to be open?
No, not one open, how many people call for Saturday, the fifteenth?
Well, but they have to make an appointment to come.
Yes.
So then you know. For bulky waste, but you're saying you're not not gonna cut them off at one dumpster like you do now.
No, we'll we'll take appointments, and if 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 there's enough appointments to fill three dumps, we'll put in three dumpsters.
All right, well, it's it's a conversation to be had, but I don't think we need to make a decision tonight.
Oh, no, you can't make a decision tonight, but somebody's have to, at the meeting on the fifteenth, explain that to the people, that.
And if it's not determined and and cemented that meeting, it will. And if it's not determined and, and cemented that meeting, it will, by July first, we will have a plan. And people will know ahead of time, so they'll know and we'll make sure it's posted appropriately so that people know, but, um.
Well, we need to know before July first, because we have to start.
Obviously, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, um, good discussion.
Can I ask you a question? It's, I, I don't know if there's other business. I don't have anything. I was wondering, um, the last, I, I just have it on, um, I wanted to follow up on the survey for Miller Road wasn't complete at the last minute, at the last meeting.
We are, actually, uh, yes, the, uh, planning and zoning reviewed it and, um, it is going forward to be discontinued. If you saw the call, it is listed on there for the un-unfinished or un, uh-oh, because I know there's a word, I'm not, I'm not. Unapproved, thank you. I knew there, I knew there was a specific word. Um, so it's for the unimproved portion of Miller Road is being discontinued.
Okay.
And then I believe we were gonna have, uh, John Paul, uh, kind of work on.
Yeah, there, there's a.
Footage, um.
We kind of drew on the map, uh, and we're gonna have John Paul kind of create it so it's more specific. Uh, and, uh, you know, but it's, it's not an extensive, uh, amount of land, but, uh, it's, it's, if you're walking that area, it's, it's basically where the pavement ends and there's gravel. In some areas, it's deeper than others. But we're gonna have a specific map and I suggested, because I represent Beacon Falls as well, that they consider abandoning their unimproved portion.
They're on board to, to.
Yeah.
Just continue on.
Which will be a lot more than ours, right? It will be a lot more than ours. And just keep in mind that anyone who has the right now to access that, that unimproved portion, I think the golf course has an emergency access. They'll continue to, they will continue to access it under thirteen dash, I think it's thirteen dash fifty-one. Uh, they have, they'll, but instead of being a public right of way, it'll be a perpetual easement in their favor. So it will not affect anyone's rights who currently has votes.
Right. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Um, no, you're sure? Second. All in favor? All right, we are adjourned at seven forty-seven. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Have a good night.
And we'll see you Thursday.